Recording in progress.
Uh, yeah, we're in the Sheridan uh city council chambers uh. It's seven o'clock um Ivan, you wanna go ahead and roll?
Yes, George.
Here.
Buckles.
Brenner.
Matt Leroy.
Here.
Hebert. Hodgins.
Here.
Houston. Flynn.
Taylor.
Oh, Taylor. Uh.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't know if either Ian or Peter are online or not, but uh.
Oh, they might be, I can take a look.
Have you heard from who's me?
Hmm.
I heard from her this morning, I think she planned on telling me in fact.
Okay, um, well, um, all right, do we have any um public comment?
We do not.
Okay, alright, well, um Preston, you wanna go ahead and introduce our presenter?
Yeah, you bet, your honor, uh, uh. Where did he go?
We're ready.
Yeah, go ahead of him. Just a quick note on work sessions, okay, uh, just for folks, uh.
There you go.
This is probably old hat for you, but there's no pressure to make decisions tonight. We want to get direction, to make sure the staff and council are all the same place so we can go forward on these policy questions so that we bring them back for you to make a decision at a later date. Uh, one of these under E is just more informational, but uh, uh, that's just sort of how work sessions can be very efficient. You can really help us move forward. Uh, uh, you'll, you'll note that on, uh, four of these issues, I've listed the policy in question. Uh, so folks can keep that in mind in their discussion uh, of this topic, so. The first one, the first item on our list tonight is, is, is a, is a great one. Uh, it's the final report of our industrial lands project, which was, uh, uh, under contract with, uh, Sedcor. Uh, so we're, we, we're wrapping that consultant agreement with this report tonight, and it's a great report. Uh, uh, so, uh, so council will discuss that report as well as the next follow-up would be potentially a, uh, a, uh, working with an IGA with Willamia, where we would hire Sedcor to manage those. Uh, uh, enterprise, the enterprise zone on our behalf. Uh, uh, but, and we'll, so we'll be talking about that. And I, at this time, I want to introduce, uh, two old friends of mine. Uh, Eric Anderson, the president of Sedcor, which you know stands for Strategic Economic Development Corporation. Uh, I often refer to them as this super duper economic development corporation because of, uh, because of the difficult job they really do to take, to try and match a business needs with the resources that are out there. Uh, so if it's an allocation issue, it's a qualification issue, but then you try and do it in a way that that satisfies, uh, the business client, uh, the public jurisdictions, the squarely city managers out there. And, and, and above all, which I just admire, admire and respect Sedcor so much, is you're dealing with elected officials across hither and yon, okay? Uh, and, uh, and, and, and Abashaw Stone, I gotta tell you, I've worked with her for many years uh, from different cities, and I'm so glad she's just found a home here in Yamhill County. Uh, uh, but, uh, uh, she has been great to work with on, on various different projects because, uh, she knows how to, uh, uh, find the resources and deal so tenderly with, with the private businesses and begin that tight rope between elected officials, the private sector, the traded sector, as well as, uh, staff. And, and I want to say that, uh, I, I've only been here, uh, about a month and a half. Uh, had one, uh, major issue, uh, about industrial tenant in town that had some difficult compliance requirements. And I want to say, Abashaw was a big help in that. Uh, big help in working with the owners to move this, this business forward, dealing with their compliance issues. Uh, and I, I'm so grateful for that, Abashaw. And, and this is the kind of thing that we need Sedcor, we need Abashaw to do. It isn't just managing the enterprise zone. It is, it is, uh, working with businesses on a variety of needs because she knows where the funds are allocated, she knows what programs are out there. How do we assist folks? How do we assist folks? And, uh, and, and she is so great at that. And, and, and when I, when I, uh, uh, asked her how she could help on this industrial lands, uh, project here in town, uh, not the initial, the industrial, uh, uh, compliance, uh, uh, issue we had here. Uh, uh, she was great. And, uh, and I, I very much appreciate all that part, Abashaw, so thank you. So this, uh, this contract that you'll consider, uh, uh, it will go just be, it'll go beyond enterprise of. Uh, Abashaw and Sedcor will be, uh, uh, consultants to help us in a variety of ways, uh, as those needs arise, so. Without further ado, come on up, Abashaw.
Well, thank you so much, Preston, that was a really nice introduction, I'm glad my thoughts were to hear it. Thank you for having me back. Um, so today I'm here to present sort of the highlights, you have the report, right? So the final report of the work that we did against our contract from the industrial land readiness project. I'm gonna review the highlights, talk through some of the points here. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, that's gonna, uh, talk a little bit about sort of what our next steps might be, what, um, ongoing support might look like in various different ways. And we want to make sure we leave you a little bit of time for questions. It is a lengthy report, you might have some technical questions about the data, you might have some thoughts or questions about, uh, what next steps are, so we want to make sure we give you time for that. So if I start talking fast, that's why, forgive me, or tell me this logo, either way. Um, so there is an executive summary, I'm gonna skim over that, the first couple of pages. Uh, again, hopefully y'all have had a chance to get through it, and also to get to the attachments. There's some pretty interesting work that we did with the employment department, uh, to get you some data about, uh, sort of your in and out queue, uh, statistics, to help you understand sort of what are average wages for some of these industries, and all of that was to help you build an understanding that if you look to invest in recruiting certain types of businesses, what does that mean, right? What does that mean for your tax base, diversification of your tax base to support infrastructure projects? What does that mean for supporting, uh, local jobs to try to keep more of those commuters here and providing family wage jobs, so that you can just be more informed as you start to make these plans, okay? So again, back to the executive summary. You know, as I was sort of this project, it occurred to me, I guess I, you know, like many people, I just take for granted that this area was built on the timber industry. It's just something we know, right? But it changed, it changed a lot, um, certainly in the, the eighties and, and just over time, there's been significant changes. And sometimes we react to that change like there was something that, that was lost, right? And it's hard for us to, to recognize how the industry has transitioned, uh, right under our feet. And so I hope that as you read this report, you did identify, or maybe it just, maybe you always knew, right? But, but just kind of couldn't see it, because sometimes we're too close to it, to recognize that Sheridan has actually been quite adapted, adaptable. The industry in Sheridan has found ways to move with the world, to stay untapped, right? But to be adaptable, and you really do have, um, a circular economy here in Sheridan for full use and reuse of the timber industry and various different products, right? I, I referenced the turf site. That is something that should be celebrated. In fact, it's something that should really be leaned into. Because, uh, timber and forest product industry is an area that the state focuses on. They focus on investment in that industry. So I think that it's something that the city should wear as a badge of honor, while still being open to other industries and innovation in other, other industries, but to say, aren't we resilient, aren't we adaptable, and these industries still thrive in our community? And I just, I wanted to honor that, uh, as we, as we jumped in on this. Okay, a few other things, you know, you have under four hundred acres of industrial land uh, within your community, and it's currently under a lot of uses, and some of that is because of previous allowances for use. There's some residential that exists on your industrial land, for example. We also have some, uh, some things that kind of seem like, um, easy to address or sort of, sort of the low hanging fruit. Uh, for example, and you can see on the map here, the gray area that I'm gonna be referring to is sort of the industrial, main industrial area, or even sometimes the industrial park has some islands that are unincorporated. Um, these are things you've, you've thought about in the past, you've talked about in the past, that's included in our recommendation, recommendation of things to consider. These are kind of easy approaches, easy in comparison to some other things, right? To consider, how do we just capture, um, the value of those properties in terms of, uh, supporting our ultimate tax base? So, w- we, we reviewed some of those things, some of the things that we knew we would encounter. Some of the things that I didn't realize we would encounter, one of them is the amount of people that are commuting out of your community every day, right? It's a significant number, yeah. And, and with the caveat that, uh, some folks that are working from home, uh, might not be counted in that number accurately. And then of course, you have a lot of truck drivers in your community, again, circular economy. Um, and I don't know how they all get counted, but if you were to look at this and just say, gosh, twenty-two hundred of our community members are leaving every day, and only a hundred and thirty live and work within our community. Recognizing how many folks are commuting into the community just to work at the prison, right? The question is, how do we make ourselves, how do we promote ourselves as the attractive community we are to just provide housing, to keep those folks here, right? So you're not just thinking about who are you recruiting in terms of business, but who are you recruiting in terms of community members? And it's something to be thinking about. Alright, so, uh, we reviewed, um, through a business survey, right? We asked the business partners, what are, what are the things that they're needing, what are the things they're struggling with? And just like Preston, um, expressed during the introduction, one of the benefits of doing this type of work is that you're engaging with the businesses, and in doing so, I mean, we just naturally, if, if I'm asking a business, oh, hey, how's, how's your infrastructure, right? And how's, uh, how are things going with your utility service provider? And they say, Abashaw, I'm having an issue with DE, DEQ, I'm not gonna walk away. So during this process, we had a chance to engage with a lot of businesses, uncover opportunities where we have businesses that are interested in selling, selling business and or property, businesses that are interested in expanding, um, and businesses that are struggling, right? With either some regulatory issues or workforce issues, and so we've been eager to support them. I want to share that with you, because there's a lot of opportunity to do that ongoing. So our, our next steps is basically, um, in regards to, well, let me take one step back. The project was about industrial lands, and it's easy to assume that we would focus entirely on the industrial park and then sort of those parcels that are sprinkled within the community. But the reality is, there's been some zoning work done to allow for light industrial downtown as well. With the concept, right, that there's some future businesses you'd like to attract there. So we made sure that our process included the downtown revitalization group and the chamber of commerce to really get engaged in those conversations about what is the current support structure for downtown businesses and what could it look like in the future. Um, and there's a lot of opportunity with the downtown business, uh, support entities, and also with your downtown development. So part of our recommendation is to continue working with your local business support nonprofit organizations, to include them as a part of your future planning, and to ultimately ensure that they have the support they need to be sold in organizations, so that they can grow with the community while helping the community grow. When it comes to the industrial lands, uh, we made recommendations for you to consider, you know, future zoning, promoting shovel readiness, which for us might look like, uh, working with Business Org, and they have some programs uh, where they can actually work with indep- independent, because you don't have, uh, you know, publicly owned property that you're trying to develop, but work with individual landowners to prepare their lands for sale. We made a recommendation to encourage lot consolidation, right? You do not have large developable, developable parcels of land that are under single ownership. The, the largest sort of continuous lots that are under single ownership are also under solar array, right? So your best bet is to work with existing businesses that are looking to expand, which we have identified some. Work with existing landowners who are interested in selling, which we have identified some. And then if your goal might be, as a part of this, um, development plan and recruitment plan, to offer larger parcels, there are some opportunities to encourage lot consolidation amongst, um, adjacent landowners, to just offer larger parcels. And so, we also, that's, you'll see that in the executive summary here, but on page fifteen of the report, we really offer a more expanded recommendation for approaches. Um, targeting supply chain partners, for example. Recognizing who already exists within your community, you know that it's, um, sort of the circular economy around uh, the timber industry. Identifying when, especially when it comes to your industrial land, the types of supply chain partners that they need in your community, and actively targeting those folks. That helps to solidify everybody's commitment to your community, right? So all those partners need each other, they want to each other, they want to be next to each other. Ultimately, they're gonna grow together within your community. Um, pursuing low impact, high value industries, right? Who are those, who should you be looking for? Because of the size of your available lots, we suggest you look locally. So again, it's, so localize your supply chain, look to local businesses that are trying to grow. Remind folks that you're prepared to welcome business, you're an attractive place to do business, okay? So, I guess I want to be as quick as I can. So in short, so what are the next steps, right? Like, what are, what are some actionable things? We provided some in here, but the question is, how do we get that started? Um, the best way to get started, I used an example in the report of the city of Independence. And I'm sure many of you are familiar with the success that they've had working a twenty-year plan. But it all started with them developing a plan, right? How do we know what we're working toward? How do we get our partners alongside us working in the same direction if we don't have a plan with goals, right? So it's developing that plan, a plan that has some vision to it. And of course, those things are always alive, so they can change, they can flex. But developing a plan, securing your partners, determining how to do that. Um, and then kind of just the getting started, right? Getting those resources aligned and, and just getting started. Um, so we are prepared to support you guys in whatever those next steps might look like. When we originally submitted to you a contract, we also, uh, kind of hinted at what a phase four might look like. Recognizing that, you know, these things need to continue momentum, but also, uh, recognizing that you have lots of partners to choose from, so we wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, who's gonna talk a little bit more about that, and, and a little bit more about how this might look in the future, and then we'll both be up here for questions, okay?
Alright, thanks Eric, again for having us here. Um, obviously, obviously I've given you a lot of, you know, things to look at in the report here, and I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it. Um, as you consider your next steps, um, and, and looking at the recommended actions, um, you know, please know that Sedcor would be, um, pleased to be, to continue to work with the, the community and, uh, identifying how we can best serve you to move forward in implementing the, the strategies that are not only recommended and you're prioritized by the council. Um, you know, a lot of the, uh, the fun work begins now with respect to actual implementation of these recommendations that have been made, so the, the, uh, the real work is yet to be. You've got a lot of good work in front of you, but the real work is yet to be done. Um, you know, we have played that role with other communities and, and, um, other cities. Um, whether it's, um, doing things like business retention expansion, um, preparing for industrial lands, um, you know, some of the supply chain work we've done, um, and, uh, I think all of those opportunities that we've identified in here are things that Sedcor has, uh, not only the expertise, but, uh, you know, good experience and, um, you know, and a track record for doing that kind of work in, in the community. The, uh, included in that, um, you also could consider the enterprise zone work. Um, first of all, we're really thrilled that, I think, right at the last minute on June thirtieth, we got the, uh, enterprise zone, um, you know, extended, which is fantastic, because, uh, we're working with another community now that has to reapply, and not fun. So I think the, uh, um, being able to have that done, and I actually really want to thank Abashaw for, um, doing some good work on that in the cog, um, really helped do some work at the last minute in Business Org, and Arthur Chapler, who's our regional development officer, um, went above and beyond to get that in, to get a signature in before July one, so, um, that was, that was very much a team approach. Um, but, you know, the work that we have been doing, I think, when I was here, I think it was about a year ago. Um, uh, let me first start talking about this work. Previously, we'd been doing it under what we kind of referred to as a retainer, where we had the, the county, uh, you know, contractor, Yamhill County, to do economic development work, and we included the, you know, the West Valley Enterprise Zone in that. Um, you know, we don't have that contract anymore, as you know, so any of the work that, um, Abashaw has been doing to, to be sure that we're moving forward in this, and including, I think, our first enterprise zone project, um, here in the community, um, that we've been doing, just, um, you know, I didn't want to help. But if there's opportunities for us to move forward, and whether it's with Sheridan and, uh, Willamia both, I, you know, we're certainly willing to do that, and, uh, look forward to the opportunity to test that with you further. Um, include that in with some of the additional work that we can be doing, our own business retention expansion and other things to help, uh, implement your strategy. Um, and, um, if it's of interest moving forward, we, you know, hope that we're able to, uh, work with staff to, uh, really get a feel for what your priorities are, and what the, and we did not come in with a, you know, nothing actually. I dislike more than a consultant coming in and saying, oh, here you go, here's our next phase. You know, we want you to be, uh, comfortable with that, and then we work with Preston and staff to make sure that, uh, we came up with something that would improve both priorities, and actually got, met the goals that you had as a, as a counsel. Happy to answer any questions on any of the work, where we go from here.
You go ahead.
Um, I just want a few clarifications on, on wording that you use. So on page three, underneath support local business growth and growth, um, you have co-working or maker spaces? What's co-working and maker spaces? That popped up from your.
Sure. Um, co-working spaces, um, okay, hey, you use a couple of different communities that we have, um, Sheridan. Satan has a co-working space, but Independence is one that we're really close with, it's called Indy Commons. And it's a great reuse, particularly in a rural community, it's a great reuse for downtown space. Um, Kate Schwartzler, who's now mayor of, of Independence, and I would offer up if there was an interest in coming over, we'd be happy to facilitate a tour there. Um, she took a little space and, uh, basically made that into flex space for, um, if you're a kind of home-based business or, um, a consultant or, you know, designer, this gives you an office. Might work out of your house most of the time, but this gives you a place and also an access to, um, resources, conference room, you know, that sort of thing. Um, and it's been something that's largely been an urban, you know, amenity in the past, and I think, uh, we've seen it's really become an opportunity, particularly with more and more home-based businesses that provide that in, in rural settings. And it also has the benefit of getting people into town. So if you're coming in here to have a meeting, you're gonna grab a coffee someplace, you're gonna, um, maybe have lunch or something like that, so it's a, it's a good way to, um, provide that, um, more infrastructure for small businesses in your community. And a maker space is somewhat similar, it's, uh, um, more curated towards manufacturing and involves, um, equipment that comes in there, so might be three D printers that can be shared by different businesses. It might be, um, other kinds of printers or other types of tools that are available. Sometimes they're much more industrial than others, sometimes they're more design and tech oriented, but, um, basically it's just a way to cooperate, cooperative use of space to, um, you know, help meet the needs of many entrepreneurs instead of just one building over there.
A shared commercial kitchen is a good example of that, too.
No, what?
A shared commercial kitchen is a good example of, of like what people traditionally think of as a maker space. But I wanted to emphasize something Eric said about, uh, those spaces do draw people out of their homes down into the core of their community, and it creates, uh, more of an opportunity for them to patronize the stores, to walk the streets, to just be more engaged in the community.
So is it a public space, or you rent the space?
I rent the space, I rent it, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, if you, and, and I'm glad I'm, I'm sure, well, the commercial kitchen, because I was thinking it, that went another way in my head. Um, Indy Commons, when they relocated into an old, uh, former restaurant, which gave them access to a kitchen. And they, um, received some grant funding, they, they worked hard to find some different funding, I think US, the US Department of Agriculture put some money into it. Um, they now have a USDA certified or, or, you know, um, some commercial space, so that if you've got somebody that makes salsa, um, they can come into that space, use the professional equipment, the commercial equipment in there, make the salsa, um, package it, and then they sell it at farmers markets, in some cases we've got them that are actually going into stores now, uh, at Indy Commons, uh, the small kombucha company, there's a company that's grown out of that space and now is doing, um, in their own space, it's, um, doing a charcuterie and, and a cheese shop. Um, but it's also a really good incubator. Um, and in the Land of Valley, I mean, we kind of undersell sometimes, as we all know, it's a kind of world-class wine area. I, I don't think, a lot of us always think, hey, that trickles down to just about everything that we, you know, grow here, so, um, I think those commercial food spaces in particular have a lot of opportunity for folks to grow their business from where they might be just doing in their kitchen right now.
The, any, that building, is it owned by the city, or is it?
Privately.
Privately owned, but, uh, you bring up a good point there, that, uh, you had asked also Councilor Hodgins about how that ownership and management looks. Some of the really successful models are public-private partnerships, where if you have an unutilized or severely underutilized public building, they can lease it out to the program that manages it for a very affordable price a year, so that those spots can still be affordable for people to rent, but you can pay a staff person to manage the programming, right? You always need someone to manage programming, so, you, you know, once you build it, they will come, yes, but they'll only stay if you have strong programming support.
And particularly if you've got shared equipment, where you have a schedule, and last thing you want to be doing is getting those phone calls in the mornings, saying, hey, can I use any equipment? And, and so having, having a professional there, you know, managing that on behalf of the community that is owning spaces, you know, you're really great at that.
Like West Valley Community, oh, I'm sorry, Southern, yeah, I can't.
Right, yes, I mean, that would, that building would be, um, it, sections of that building, right? With the planned investment that they have, would be really ripe for this type of thing.
Yeah.
Very much so.
And also provides a space, I mean, you know, we have, we have available a desk at Indy Commons if we want to meet with clients over there, our whole meetings over there too, so, I mean, other nonprofits, uh, some of the federal delegations and state legislators, uh, just spaces there where their staff can meet with clients and meet with community also, so it's, it doesn't have to just be business people, it's, it's a nice amenity to look at.
Okay, and I have one more question, be quiet. Um, the circular economy cluster that you referred to, is that just like interconnectedness between types of manufacturing and the people that they would be using that whole cycle? Is that what you mean there?
Yes, and also, so yes, and then the, the additional part of that is that, um, it's the entirety of the life cycle, right? So you grow that product here, um, you are using that product, so you have businesses in your community that are doing all kinds of stuff with that wood product, right? So you've got mills here, you have the pulp plant here, um, you have accents of wood who are actually recapturing old wood, trying to restore it or give it a second life, so you've got from the very beginning to the very end of that, that life. And then all of the ancillary companies that come alongside a primary industry cluster. Um, Jobshox, in this instance, right, we made the reference to the tire recycling company, then becoming the turf recycling company, which is made out of tires. So, um, it's, it is about sort of all the partners within that industry and also the life cycle of the industry.
Jim, I noticed, I read in the review that, and we all want to work together, and you, I didn't count, that there's several references to the revitalization movement and the Chamber of Commerce. Rotary was only mentioned once, I think they would be one of the strongest, uh, organizations in context, because they meet, they meet weekly. Uh, Chamber of Commerce only twice a month, revitalization movement once a month, they're a weekly organization, and they're all, most of them are business owners.
Yeah, that's a great point, thank you for mentioning that. Rotary has been a great partner, and obviously a major contributing, uh, partner to supporting community development in the city of Sheridan, and the only reason why, um, I didn't highlight them the same way that I did the other two, uh, partners was because the downtown revitalization movement and the Chamber of Commerce have a sole focus on business development, and I know that the Rotary has so much more, right, that they do. And I know that the Rotary has so much more, right, that they do in terms of how they support the community, and, and they are an amazing partner. So thank you for mentioning that because all of this work that we're talking about doing has to be done in partnership with, with multiple entities. But that was why, um, counselor, it was just because of that, uh, specific focus on business development.
And the facade, you mentioned.
The facade improvement program, things like that, yeah.
I'd take one more question, um, read through, I didn't see the word annex in, in the, you know, to the, or the growth boundary. If, uh, we're looking to increase our tax base and that property isn't based in the city, how do we, how do we get money out of that? Other than the traffic that goes through, uh, that they entertain our business, we're not gonna be getting many taxes off of them if they're not within the city limits.
Are you referring, and which properties are you referring to that are within the city limits?
Of the gray area, those, they, they supposed to all be in the city limits, and then, so I don't have a map that well.
So there was a reference to the islands, which are the two white parts on the gray map, saying that there would be a benefit, right, to consider, um, basically bringing those into the city limits, so there, the, those would, that would be an annexation. We did not make a recommendation for additional future annexation that would be a part of your process to expand your urban growth boundary. And so you'd have to determine need and, and as you know, right, for housing and industrial versus commercial or retail. So ultimately you'll be doing that and looking at, uh, growing in that way, but we did make a recommendation that you can bring those islands in, yeah. And maybe they use that specific one, yeah.
Which, those first two islands, which two?
You want me to, I gotta point out them.
Yeah, these two, okay.
Yes, the two in the gray.
Yeah.
That's what Jim used to have a place.
Yeah. Thank you, counselor.
Why, why after I go, wayfinding. We had a presentation approximately two or three years ago about wayfinding, so it was very nice looking signs. And Willamina took him up on it and it looked great.
Yeah.
It got to here and it fell flat on the space, I have no idea what status that is other than probably dead. How do we revive that in a, you know, reasonable way? And then we worked, we worked with Sea View before, is that?
Sea Reach.
I thought that was a Ford Foundation.
See, we've already worked, we're debating, I don't know who presented it, but Willamina obviously jumped on it and it looks real nice and I agree that we should have jumped on it.
Sea Reach did the artwork and they did one for Grand Run, and then they did one for Willamina and Sheridan, and then.
But the, it was through the Ford Foundation, a grant.
The Ford Foundation.
Yeah.
But I think in most communities, it's those blue signs, it's just a blue sign that points.
Yeah, I'm not sure where you're funding, uh, opportunity for that project to come from.
I think that was one of the issues is we.
There was a beautiful.
Different, the gray color.
Yeah, we don't have, have any money especially, and then, uh, then the design they brought for Sheridan had a tractor stuck in the middle of the envelope. And we, tractor, no, no, the bridge is our city, we want the bridge built, and then what?
Well, I will tell you that, sorry for the interruption, I will tell you that you have one of the foremost, uh, wayfinding organizations in the country, if not the world, right, here in the city of Sheridan, uh, with Sea Reach. They're an amazing organization, the work that they do is, um, is, I mean, top-notch, right? So the businesses, especially downtown, desire, uh, wayfinding, right? Desire foot traffic, uh, desire, um, tourist traffic and, um, getting folks off of the main highway and into the community to come to their, uh, stores is of high value to them, and so ultimately, I, I know that y'all had looked at that in the past, I know that there was a logo conversation in the past. I agree with you, Counselor Buckles, that I knew it didn't go anywhere, and your community desires that, and I think it would be a high-value proposition for them.
I agree, thank you. And it can, that can even be, you know, like you said, the highway, like on eighteen, around exit thirty-three, there's, you know, it's, you know, points toward our town, it says restaurants and things. I think only some ways on there, I know that's kind of, it's kind of an O dot thing, since it's an O dot road, but still, like, that's, you know, adding wayfinding, like, access to places that could go.
And the blues, the blue signs, that can be tricky, I mean, that is something, it's, it's, when, when I worked for the state, I actually had a, um, picture of, um, the Lafayette Antique Mall who signed, because, um, we helped them get that. And I basically retraced the steps that the community and the antique mall folks had tried to do, and all they wanted to do was say, stay on the road and come to this thing, that way you come into downtown, and we had to fight quite a bit of, you know, um, federal and state rules or really big books that says, we can't put a sign out in here that helps people to stay on. But they're going that way, they're going to the, you know, casino, going to the coast, so it's a long process, but it's something we've had a little bit of experience. And I think with the, the wayfinding question, I mean, given our relationship with Sea Reach and, uh, also Ford Family Foundation and others, I think that's a, it sounds like it's a priority for the community, that's something we could help facilitate the discussion again. I don't know why tractor would be on that either, so I think there's tons of opportunities to, uh, you know, be able to create that conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here, um, more questions?
Actually, I do, um, as I was reading this, I was thinking, how could we generate, um, interest and, and businesses coming to Sheridan? And I remember that, at one of the county dinners, the city manager of Newburgh was talking about how he changed their, um, SBC fees. So he would waive some fees for some businesses, I don't know what the criteria was or, or not, like he wouldn't even have to pay an SBC fee just to attract businesses, and I was thinking, we should think about something like that too to attract businesses, especially with the empty buildings we have.
Yeah, we did make some recommendations, right, in the report around different types of financial incentives. And also reminded you that it's not always financial incentives that businesses need, right? Sometimes they need, um, ease of access to information, right? They need consistency, they need, uh, other types of supports for permitting and, and whatnot. But these sort of, um, financial incentives can be really valuable, and we've seen communities take different approaches depending on their goal, right? So we've seen communities, and that's what the city of Newburgh did, they looked and they said, what are the most valuable businesses for us to make sure stay here? One of the reasons they did that was because they had a dearth of industrial lands and existing buildings. They had industrial partners leaving the community because they were existing businesses that were growing, they were thriving, and they couldn't grow within that community because there was nowhere for them to go, so they were leaving. So the city said, how do we keep them here, how do we encourage them to come to our community, what do we do? They had a specific focus and they determined that this was a good approach to support trade sector business development within their community. We've also had, uh, community partners that have said, for example, um, we want a brewery downtown. They put together a grant program to entice someone to build a brewery downtown and said, you don't get that money though until the mayor can sit inside the brewery that is certified, approved, open brewing beer and actually drink one, right? And make sure that what they were planning for happened, but, um, so there's a lot of directions you can go. Having that plan and saying, what are we focusing on is the best place to start to determine what program to develop. And, and we'd like to help you identify that structured approach as well, if it brings value to your community. Because you kind of, if you, if you look at the one-off programs, you, I'm sure you can find successful ones and you take a good shot and, and you can get a successful one. But you might be missing something else, right? So if you can look at it as like an umbrella of, we wanna accomplish all these things, what are the best ways to approach them from a zoning perspective, right? From a, um, staff capacity for support perspective, from an incentive perspective? What, what do each of those types of industries require in terms of incentives to cause them to come here? That's a, a helpful, uh, structured approach to take.
And if you wanna prioritize, you know, currently vacant space and somebody moving in that, then that's something that you might wanna take a look at.
That's what I was thinking, our vacant buildings.
But have, having it, you know, well thought out and, and, um, having that menu available so somebody can say, okay, if we're doing this kind of project, oh, they want us in Sheridan, is what they're doing to incent us, this is the kind of project they want.
I called Newburgh today, the city manager just called me back, so I wanna find out more about it.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, Newburgh's been doing some really innovative things the last couple of years, either with housing too, with work for housing.
Good.
Can you find a way to work with that floodplain with buildings that are actually usable versus, I know the Hyder Building got attacked because they made the mistake of getting it all out at one time, and then they had to go through every little painstaking. Where usually there's a, a dollar amount attached to improvements, but if so, so if you have a, you know, if subway were to wanna turn into a different form of business, it's in the floodplain because it's an original building, have you tried to help figure out a way to get around that one? Because that would help, that would help a lot of buildings also.
That's a great question, counselor, and I know we've had this conversation about, uh, that issue in the city. It was very valuable, uh, for you to help me understand the issue that the businesses are having in the community. We started asking around, right, about what approach could be taken, what could be done, and, uh, learned about sort of the FEMA LOMR and LOMA process. So lap of, letter of map revision, letter of map.
Amendment.
Amendment, I'm always reading the A. The LOMA is generally for a single parcel, LOMR is for a larger area, okay? I had quite a few conversations with our friend Liam here, uh, some conversations with Arthur Checkwood at Business Oregon. I was actually contacted by, um, Congresswoman Salinas's office, uh, Fritz called and said, hey, I heard that you're doing some work in Sheridan, right, with the industrial lands, I got a phone call from a property owner who actually did go through a LOMA process, who owns property in the city of Sheridan and did have an adjustment made. He is requesting support to do an expanded, uh, view, so a LOMR. Uh, we have spoken to a local partner in the city of Sheridan about whether or not we might be able to get a donation of support to help the city get through a LOMR process. And so, uh, Congresswoman Salinas's office has asked us to follow up with them if the city does decide to pursue a LOMR because, um, there might be some challenges in accessing, uh, FEMA programs right now and, and getting to the right person, and they wanna support us in being successful in doing that. I'm not suggesting that a LOMR or a LOMA is gonna unearth something that's gonna change everyone's world, but it is a tool. It is an opportunity to actually request that the map get a better look at it. Arthur Checkwood told me a story about a, a business or a landlord he was working with on the coast, who had this floodplain designation on his property, he couldn't build there, he said that it's so silly when you stand on that property, you can see that the water's gonna go that way, right? So they went through the process, did a LOMA and actually determined that, yes, you know, FEMA, when they look at maps, sometimes they're looking at old maps, sometimes they're, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I know Liam would, but they, they might have information that's not entirely updated or accurate. And when they looked at it again, sure enough, they said, actually, this portion of your property is not in the floodplain, you can build what you want here. So it does happen, and, uh, it is a recommendation that's included in the report.
And when Abashaw referred to, you know, that someone volunteering some potential help, we, you need someone with the proper certification, whether it's an engineer or somebody that can actually do that work and sign off on it in a meaningful way so that FEMA will, you know, look at the information that's coming in and say, okay, that's been done by a professional. I couldn't, I couldn't just say, looks dry to me, you know, and sign off on it.
We've tried to move as far forward as we can to collect as much data for y'all as possible so that we can say, um, here's a thing you could do to try to determine whether there's any additional oppo, to unlock any additional opportunity in your community.
So if I were to maybe give you a call tomorrow and ask for that step procedure, I can talk more one-on-one with you.
Absolutely.
To see where you're at and then where you would continue on, and what I appreciate is people helping you share the steps instead of, you know, it's not there, go figure it out yourself because most people aren't gonna be able to do that. And even I can't do that, I mean, I'm, in fact, what did you say, the R, the LOMR, I, I know about LOMR.
LOMR, right, is a larger, uh, map revision, which just means they look at a larger area, so that would be multiple parcels, it could be a whole downtown, to my knowledge, just more than one. LOMA is a single parcel.
It's also, if it's based on fill, it becomes a LOMR. So, uh, our next item is actually the floodplain, we can get into more conversation, but.
Thank you, Abashaw, for such a wonderful statement.
I appreciate it. But yes, LOMRs also trigger if it's based on fill and that's called a LOMR F. There's a whole, so, yeah, you got CLOMRs, CLOMAs, CLOMR Fs, LOMR Fs.
Liam knows all about these things.
Yeah.
Um, any, any more questions, because, yeah, the, the LOMR sounds great to me, but I'm sure, um, it's, Liam will tell us something about that.
The process, everything.
But, yeah, any other questions for Sedcorwell, they're here, um, Jim, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, this is real quick, I was about to, of course, I read it, it's great, and we need, we need to come up with next steps, but if we want to, we need to get another contract to say, okay, you did good, help us with, if we wanna work with you, we need to do it again, is that?
Yep, it just depends on the type of support that y'all are looking for. Uh, but we would certainly like the opportunity to work with Preston and your team to develop something.
For phase four, right, because we were through phase three, right?
Our, our, our contract is one through three is complete.
Right.
This would be a new.
So we would have.
New enterprise.
Yeah, and, yeah, phase four and beyond could be part of our contract with Sedcor if we wanna have them manage the enterprise zone. So that, that's an option.
I thought we were managing it with Willamina too, I thought this was a collaborative.
That is a sponsorship, so you jointly sponsor it.
Oh, okay.
And then Sedcor actively manages it, meaning that we work with the businesses on their projects to submit the application, will determine eligibility, submit the application, work with Business Oregon to get it processed well, and the assessor's office. And then on an annual basis, we, uh, there's a reporting that has to happen, so we do that reporting, uh, or we poke them until they write their reports and we get it to the assessor's office.
I think there's some opportunity for cooperative discussion with Willamina and Sheridan and Sedcor, and, you know, three-way conversation about the next steps.
And we'll just say this, it's a little bit difficult, I was at the Fourth of July and I was talking to some people and they said, how come Willamina just has all these little businesses here, how come Sheridan, ah, and I said, well, you know, Sheridan's on a floodplain. And they said, well, what do you mean by that? And I said, well, if it's raining in the winter, it might be raining in Sheridan, but Willamina might have snow, and it really is a small elevation. I think, how close are we, like, if it's one ninety-six and you're out of your one ninety-eight or something crazy like that? I said, it's like two foot, this is, and they said, well, don't they just let some of the existing, just, and I know they do it with homes, your grandfather did, that once FEMA used to do it like that, with their flood insurance, if, if your house was built prior to the flood of nineteen sixty-four, they wouldn't dock you as if you built your house with the new FEMA flood codes, and then you deliberately didn't follow the rules, that house is gonna be paying, you know, thousands of dollars more than the house that didn't really, you know, didn't know any better because it never had happened prior to nineteen sixty-four. And they find that, they said, isn't there something you can do to change that? And I said, well, you know, we're trying to change that because it's, uh, falls into almost the, it's not fair. But I would think if Sheridan and Willamina collaborate and you're gonna get to that place where you're not in the floodplain and we are, although you can get not far out of town before you're out of the floodplain in Sheridan, I think by the time you get to Estella Jones, before that, you're, you're outside, yeah, you're outside.
Yeah, the flood map showing that, and to, uh, your counsel's point, I think that's a great translation to Liam. Who can answer that, who could certainly answer that better than I could. But yes, and, and when you look at your flood map, uh, you don't have that up here, but, oh, there is, sorry, when you look at your flood map, you'll see that. And, and we know that that in our report, that the majority of your industrial land is actually outside of the floodplain. So, uh, that is a, a value, uh, that's a benefit.
But our business is, yeah.
Mr. Bear, do you have anything else for us before we?
No, I don't, I don't think so, Preston, do you have any?
Well, just, uh, uh, the policy outcome is, is to develop, uh, uh, an IGA, Willamina and Sheridan, that would, uh, have Sedcor jointly, uh, manage those enterprise zones as well as other related, you know, business consultations. So, uh, if, if, if that's, if that's your direction, thumbs up, we will bring back that IGA for you to consider in a regular meeting.
And what we, the language we have in there can be different than what Willamina's IGA says. So if we say, you know, we wanna continue on phase four, that's not gonna make sense in Willamina's IGA because they didn't have any phases for this sort of project, but we can say in our IGA, specific things, you know, we align.
Sure.
Um, and then Willamina would have their own IGA, as far as I understand, you know.
Yeah, it could all be under the same agreement.
Okay.
You know, sure.
Good, wonderful, thank you for inviting us down.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I also just, uh, wanna give a shout out to your staff. Sheridan city staff have been really great to work with, and I do include Liam in that. And I do include Liam in that. Um, the staff has been wonderful to work with. There has been a significant transition and everybody has just been so amazing to work with. So, yes, you as well. So I, I did wanna let you know that this is a link, it's been a lengthy process. There's a lot of conversations to be had. I've reached out many times asking for contact, information, or background or history. And you just have an amazing staff here that really wants to do good work. They're, they're motivated to see things move forward. And as a contracted, um, support entity, it is very apparent. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to wear my Sedcor hat.
You can bring more. So Preston, do you wanna introduce this one or do you think we should just start?
Start with Navishaw already introduced.
Yeah, she introduced.
Yeah, I think I've been seen up. And I think that there's already some questions and maybe some more things we can dive into.
So, okay, let me, let me just sit this page real, uh, long, okay? Uh, uh, the sheet that you've got on your page. This, uh, uh, talks about four things to, uh, uh, and then-
Yeah, sorry, very last page of the page.
Thank you.
Right, right. So you got that, you got that, okay?
Okay.
So, so the purpose of this discussion is so that, as a council, you understand how onerous punitive these federal requirements are on our downtown. Before we can even talk about what to do next, we wanna make sure you understand all that. So that's really the purpose for this. And future policy would be to discuss strategies on what we're gonna do. So, uh, these four things is what has driven away wonderful businesses from investing in our downtown. Especially number one. But we've lost a wine tasting business. We've lost, uh, 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 what's the other one that I'm aware of?
Oh, God, we talked about this just today, I was thinking about that as well.
The, the Hydrableen. They got a grant for facade grant. And, and because of stuff like this, that grant mostly ended away. It's, uh-
Lost prohibited.
Well, and you're correct, it is, it is, uh, the, a lot of these rules were done for new construction to shore up homes and all, but some, okay, so the building's been vacant for a while. Sometimes there's an existing business you wanna switch out. You're not changing the footprint, the building and all. So these things that really should apply just to new construction, uh, and, and number one especially, which Liam will explain more fully, but it is preventing people from investing in our downtown. And for businesses to expand. So, uh, real quick, if you could run through the grand flow-
So, yeah, Preston asking for this quick memo for you all, kind of following that conversation. We expected there to be some questions about the floodplain. And as he's introduced, there's really currently four development requirements for businesses in the floodplain that don't exist for people outside of the floodplain. And that's what we're gonna kind of constrain the conversation to. But the one thing I wanna point out is basically if you're doing work in the floodplain, my answer to almost every single question as staff is going to be, you need to go get a surveyor or engineer. Right? For most significant work, you need to go get a registered land surveyor or an engineer. I can't make determinations based off of this stuff. None of our staff can, not even a CFM, if you're a certified floodplain manager. You need this stuff to be done by a registered land surveyor engineer. And that's gonna add cost to any project. So that's just kind of big overarching thing, right? We cannot make decisions based off of this stuff using existing information. So generally, there are four floodplain constraints on commercial structures in the special flood hazard area. The area of special flood hazard is all of the 100-year floodplain and all of the floodway, right? And that's shown up on there. And 100-year floodplain is kind of a misnomer. It's really based on the percent chance. There's a 1% chance a year that it floods, right? So theoretically, once every 100 years, floodwater will reach that point and it will reach a certain height. There's gonna be areas within that floodplain where flood is expected more frequently or lower floods might be expected more frequently, right? The floodway is the area where regular flooding is supposed to occur, right? Regular might mean on a 20-year cycle, it might be not a 30-year cycle, but your regular hydro water area, your area of overflow. If you're building in the special flood hazard area, there's something called floodproofing. Sometimes we call it elevating, sometimes we call it wet floodproofing, dry floodproofing. And any new structure has to be flood resistant, flood resistant construction. The easiest way to do that is to elevate the structure to the level of the base flood elevation, which is determined by our FEMA firm map. So a map from FEMA determines where it will flood in a 1%, 1% chance and what will that height be, that maximum height. And we're all pretty familiar with this type of elevated construction because it means building a special foundation that water can run through typically. There's also dry floodproofing. Dry floodproofing is not an option for residential construction. Dry floodproofing is not elevating, but making materials that are immune to a flood, right? You might consider a, actually a plywood wall. When water hits it, it might be damaged, but it will reject water and push it away, right? The idea is things that do not allow water to penetrate into the structure. FEMA now prefers metal over plywood, but there are multiple forms of dry floodproofing. It includes painting something with a waterproof membrane. Painting existing masonry with a special membrane can make it dry floodproofed. Having slots to drop metal barriers into windows and doors can make it dry floodproofed. And having specialty construction can make something dry floodproofed. There's very expensive ways to make a garage door dry floodproofed. Wet floodproofing, elevation, in order to prove to the city and to FEMA, remember, we're not, we, our, our, FEMA looks at our records every five years, right? We're not trying to, these aren't our requirements necessarily. In order to prove to me, so that I can prove to FEMA that you are wet floodproofed, you only need a surveyor to sign off on what's called an elevation certificate. Form of these certificates has changed over the years and they've added more and more and more information. But surveyors are very familiar with how to do this. They go out, they shoot, right, and they determine, okay, you built that diselevation. For wet floodproofing, or sorry, for dry floodproofing, the only person who can certify it is an engineer. So if you want to wet, uh, dry floodproof, I get them mixed up all the time. If you want to dry floodproof a building, right, you need to have an engineer design it and certify it that it is dry floodproofed. Surveyors are expensive, engineers are more expensive, right? So both an expense added. Now that new construction has to meet those requirements. What happens is when something is called a substantial improvement or when the cost of an improvement is greater than half of a building's assessed value, not the building and land, just the building. FEMA calls that a substantial improvement. 50% is sort of, they're bearing also on losses as well. They use that term a lot. Anytime that is triggered, you have to raise the entire structure back to the current level. If it's a residential structure, if it's a commercial structure, if it's an industrial structure, does not matter. You trigger a substantial improvement, you have to bring that entire structure to new current code. If you're a residential structure, your only option is to elevate the house. If you are a commercial structure, you can choose the wet floodproofing, elevate the structure under specialized foundation, or the dry floodproofing, install dry floodproofing as designed by an engineer. The dry floodproofing is cheaper, but harder to meet and harder to certify. The wet floodproofing is more expensive, but easier to meet and easier to certify. Because Oregon has low assessed property values, right, due to our tax law. This means that that substantial improvement triggers for some buildings on just a $50,000 project. Some buildings, it could be a $100,000 project. Some buildings, it might be a $25,000 project. Our assessed values are kind of low. And that means that if somebody comes in, they might, they can pay a private assessor, create a new assessment, which could be, could be accepted. Or we can use their assessed value as it comes in from Yanville County. And remember, those, those real market values as they come in from the county are not the real property and building values. They are those repressed values. That means that these substantial improvements trigger a lot in Oregon in a way that they might not trigger in other states that don't have the same kind of tax structure. That's the big one. Number one is the big one. I spent the most time on number one. I promise I'm not gonna spend as much time on the others. Number one is the big one.
Can we cut to the chase?
We can cut to the chase.
Do you mind?
No, go ahead, Preston.
So, uh, there's ways to comply. If money's no object, then these requirements are not wrong. But you heard many reasons how this gets more expensive. And if you wanna know why downtown is looking the way it is, it's because of this. And, and it, it, it wasn't designed, none of these requirements were designed to ruin a downtown. It has done that to Sheridan. We're, we're, these are affecting us unlike anywhere else in the Willamino Valley. And, and, and there's a way to work around some of these things that could work with folks or to sit down and walk them through it and all that. It shouldn't be that hard, but it is. People don't, normally, they can't conduct a, an investment strategy in a normal downtown. You know, constructing, hiring a contractor, you gotta, the, all that normalness is thrown out. You gotta, you got a new reality now. And so, uh, so I, I don't know if we have to go into these other three things. We got four total, they're all difficult to deal with. We've driven a lot of good businesses away from investing. I'm not sure what all the answers are, but I want you all to know that our downtown is the way it is because of this. And, and maybe we can find some strategies out of this, and that's forthcoming. But what else can we help you on this subject?
This is, uh, I mean, we've seen a lot of things lately about facade improvement. Does that consider renovation? Does it, does it also affect, you know, what after you've done, because of facade?
It, it, technically, yes. This gets, it gets more complicated, depends on whether or not the work required a building permit, right? If somebody is going out and painting, they're not pulling a building permit and there's maybe no review. Most facade improvement is not gonna be significant structural work, right? Structural work occurs, building permits are required, floodplain permits are required. I mean, we would do this entire review. So technically, it is all improvements, but the clock really starts ticking when they have to come in and put a paper on the desk. That's just the honest, uh, answer.
So the short answer is, uh, hopefully not, so I just kinda- The short answer is, yes, this applies even to facade improvements. How ridiculous that is.
So discouraging.
You know, that we, we can't do facade improvements without, you know, triggering these onerous federal requirements. So, uh, a lot of facade improvements could be managed under these limits and get there. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about downtown development standards a little later on the agenda. And, and I, I don't wanna get you discouraged on that because that is definitely a must-do for downtown. So, so hold that thought just for a little bit, Jim, okay? Any, anybody wanna commiserate more? Lost businesses, I'm sure you're all aware of them, over the time.
Well, Liam, what is your thought on a L O M R? It sounds like it's probably, since it, since our downtown is so close to the river, at a certain point, and just, I would imagine at a certain point, I mean, if we have all of, you know, South Bridge, including the L O M R, I imagine that would be super expensive. But at some point, it might say, okay, yeah, this is the cutoff, but it might be, you know, way down, away from the downtown area.
So I'm just gonna, you know, this is what I have to tell applicants, it's what I have to tell you. You're gonna have to hire a surveyor. That's the honest truth. I mean, we contract with an engineer who happens to be a registered land surveyor. So we've got one in our pocket, ready to go. The truth is, I won't, I won't know until the surveyor goes out and shoots. And the truth is, is the standards for those floodplains have changed over time. So the standard to get your property removed by a L O M A or L O M R or L O M R F, those might be different. And in fact, right now FEMA is not processing L O M R Fs in our region. So we can't get out using fill or any of those other tactics as well. The truth is, I, I'm optimistic that if you did a large land survey, if we, if we looked at a lot of properties, that there would be some that we could remove from the regulatory floodplain. I'm almost certain that some properties would come out. Is it gonna be those high-value properties in the downtown core that we need to come out? I don't know. I think we'd be able to remove properties on the fringes for certain. But I can't tell you that with 100% certainty because I am a land use planner. Unfortunately, I'm not a PLSS, so I can't go out there and shoot.
Jim? Do you know, just in seeing what's going on? I know that when they were doing construction on the Hydrableen, they were talking about floodplain issues.
Yeah.
They, they have been, I saw them do with the earthquake issues, got those with the engineer look great. Do you know that they have already met the criteria, what they need to have done for floodproofing?
So Preston mentioned earlier that there is, I'm, traditional investment strategies, as they should work, kinda don't work in our downtown. And what people have to do to avoid triggering these is the, kind of the Pete Sager strategy, the inch-by-inch, row-by-row strategy. And that is what they took in a hydro. The problem with that strategy, I'm only gonna do $10,000 worth of work and then $30,000 worth of work the next year, and then $40,000 worth of work the next year is to cause a project to stall. So that's what happened in this case, is that they actually were pacing the work to not trigger the improvements. And because they paced the work, the project stalled and eventually they lost capital for other, uh, other unrelated reasons. But that's what can happen if you do the inch-by-inch, row-by-row to try and we could do it.
I found one of them saying, Tom said though, it's, it's going up. We got the emails that, hey, they're getting ready to put it up for auction, get somebody in there. Anybody that buys that, though, they have to know, if they wanna have a successful business in there, they're gonna have to do the hard part and you do the, the wet floodproofing or the dry floodproofing.
Yeah. And the, the, the good news is, and I, I know that this doesn't sound like good news, is in a bigger project, maybe like the Hydrableen, they might be thinking a little bit more that there's a stronger capital investment to finish that project versus, let's say, a smaller, um, one, one existing use in a building switching to another that's already current and active. Or maybe not the entire building needs to switch over, but just one tenant does. That, I think, is the sneakier, where people are less, they, they expect that to, well, they don't expect that, I think, is, is the honest truth. And we basically have to, have everybody do a cost estimate. You have to give me an itemized cost estimate that I then compare against the cost of your, of your, uh, okay? Did you go mark that?
One of the, I was just gonna say, one of the plus advantages, I guess, the Hydrableen could have, of course, if it wasn't in the floodplain at all, I would still have access to this, but it, uh, being on our downtown, it does have access to a lot of Main Street Oregon, you know, grants. And, you know, if there is a business, there are, you know, Business Oregon, you know, grants and loans and things like that. But it's still gotta meet that, that, that floodplain. So if that floodplain wasn't there, they could do a lot more with those grants and, and the funding and stuff. Yeah, but, but, uh, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Are there any floodplain incentives or grants to help people in that situation?
Please. Somewhere that's weird is that FEMA does actually have grants available for bringing structures up to flood-resistant construction. However, you usually have to seek those grants voluntarily. They're limited, and right now FEMA has very limited administrative capacity. So their administrative capacity has been, they're, uh-
Ching tong.
Yeah. But their mandate and order, their, their mandate and all the things they need to do have not- Yeah, but their mandate and order, their, their mandate and all the things they need to do have not changed. So we're still operating under all the same regulations with two-thirds of the administrative capacity.
And it's FEMA.
So there are options, uh, there are options available. We, I, I acknowledge that I'm your floodplain administrator, but I'm not a CFM. And, uh, CFMs do go through training on how to help people navigate those programs. Having that kind of training in your back pocket also helps you get some CRS credit as well. So there are advantages to kind of pursuing that. We, I know we're not talking about policy and strategy and, and, and things quite at that narrow level. One policy can be, we've had the COG planner be our floodplain administrator, pretty much, uh, well, since the COG has provided planning services to you. There is the alternative option of, does the city want to try and find another way to administrate the floodplain? That could, we could have a, a point of contact, but that also is, we're talking costly, you know, costly staffing. I'm just, I'm kind of over spitballing about, people can guide folks through those grant programs, but they're pretty, they're pretty complex. You can, what's interesting is FEMA in those grants will, uh, pay for improvements that might not actually bring it all the way up to the floodproofing standards, but would be considered floodproofing, which is interesting. So they'll, they'll, they'll provide incentive for you to improve the structure, even if it doesn't bring it all the way up, which is interesting. But when it comes to the mandatory improvements, you have to bring it all the way.
Okay, uh, Preston, go ahead.
Plenty of reasons to run away screaming. That doesn't mean we can't find ways through with a willing owner. But that has been, uh, not very successful. But there is those narrow opportunities. So we, we wanna, we wanna discuss other strategies at a later date on how we address this very onerous, these federal regulations that are ruining our downtown.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing up our floodplain manager.
Floodplain administrator.
Administrator.
I want you all to announce.
That's right. So in light of the latest of the meeting, Your Honor, uh, uh, let me hold off on one of my favorite subjects. That's the Oregon land use, planning history. We can actually, uh, dabble into that once we talk about overall flooding issues for the city. We can handle that on another day. But the main thing that comes out of that is, we talked about a buildable lands update to deal with the new mandates on our city, uh, 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 residential zones. And, uh, unless, I talked about it in, in that presentation of the budget.
That's wild, there, buddy.
Yeah. So, I mean, unless anything's changed, I mean, we'll plan on bringing back to you a proposal from the COG for Liam and Jim Jacks to conduct that building land inventory assessment. To see what, how many new units that we are expected to provide within the city limits. So, uh, are we good on that? That's, that will come forward with a proposal to council.
Would it just look like, at, you know, potential housing units?
Yes, and our city limits, based on the new mandates for density.
Let, let Liam answer.
Actually, uh, there are two different kinds of BLI. There's the residential BLI, which is what, um, I think we want to put forward and move forward with. We can do the BLI for the commercial lands as well. And we're gonna, we're, we'll tell you what both those numbers are. And then we can go from there, uh, because, but one builds into the housing capacity analysis, the other builds into the economic opportunities analysis, right? So right now, we're talking about just residential, but we'll give you the numbers so you can decide if you want to, if you want to look at commercial. Because it's always gonna be cheaper to do it all now. Our GIS staff are, and it gets our GIS staff in queue working on the project faster.
We want both.
Yes.
More or less, how many hookups we need, excellent, in the city, we have left.
Yeah, that can help us plan for, you know, whether or not we're gonna have to expand sewer or water, that type of thing.
And land.
Correct.
So I think we're talking about 10, 12,000 to do that kind of an update within the city limits. But we will, we will bring a proposal forward to council to, to address that. On, on the wastewater side, that's already being done by Civil West. They're working on that. So let's move on to number E then. And, and this item is really more informational, but it's not to, it's not to talk about the TSP. But I do wanna, I do wanna just mention that the city was awarded a $250,000 grant to do a TSP. This is an update for our transportation system plan. It's a big deal. Takes about 18 months to get it all done. And Liam was key in getting that grant to the city. So that work will plant the seeds for these things in here. And, and, and as far as the community outreach and what they're doing, because they look at, they, they look at, you know, a, a business district that connect to state highways, Bridge Street, Main Street. And, and, and so this TSP work will plant the seed for a potential urban renewal district feasibility, uh, study, which may or might not work for Sheridan. I don't know enough about Sheridan yet to, you know, give you a, a thought about that, but, but the TSP is good at planting that seed. Another thing, uh, uh, that we will make sure is in there and discussed is a vertical housing development zone. This is a tax credit for people, for developers to build, uh, uh, mixed-use development. Businesses on the first floor, residences on the, on the upper floors. And, and developers get a substantial credit for building that upper force. And it's a great program. I put it into a couple places. We have mixed-use development in our code. This, this is gonna be wonderful. The last one I want to talk about a little bit more is something really essential for our downtown. And that's, uh, developing downtown development standards. And, uh, ODOT, uh, uh, tends to offer grants, TGM grants, to help cities develop those standards, especially when they're defacing. So, uh, the reason why that's important is you develop your overlay. I talked to Paul, our Chair of the Planning Commission, she just thinks this is a wonderful idea, and, and others. And so you have this overlay, say, on, on Bridge and, and, and part of Main, where you control the facade development. Texture, signage, colors, all of these pedestrian improvements, awnings, windows, uh, all of these architectural elements that become part of your overlay area. And so, uh, getting a TGM grant to do this has worked out so well, they come in, they facilitate it all, they're with the Planning Commission and then the council, uh, to establish these downtown development standards. And, and they really are essential for any downtown seeking to rebuild, revitalize. I mentioned here a facade grant award committee, because wherever I put in standards, I'm doing that, I did it up here. We also have a grant program to help businesses meet those standards. And it, and it's a matching program, uh, dollar for dollar, up to say 15,000. A building, you know, with 15 and 15, a $30,000 could work wonders on your, on your streetscapes. And, and change the, the eye appeal, make them inviting, welcoming. It only takes one business to really take advantage of it, and then all of a sudden, oh, there's a lot of good to it. But, uh, very important, I, I, to, I think, build that downtown, uh, eye appeal and, and show that we're working. The, the revitalization committee that we have for downtown, uh, they're the ones who secured the Main Street grant. They would be a perfect one to facilitate this committee. Just as a thought, you, you, you develop this award committee, uh, uh, and, and they're entrusted to make those awards. The, the, the committee receives applications, we have an architect on retainer to review those and make sure they meet the downtown development standard. And then they make those awards, and, and we're rocking them wrong. Generally, you've got a, a working committee of interested folks, plus a planning commissioner, plus the city council are actually making those award decisions. I think this revitalization committee would be perfect for that. And, and this is one of the few areas where, uh, for council to shed a little bit of responsibility to an award committee that's fully staffed. Public meetings, notice, all that kind of stuff. It's got your architect, your staff. I mean, it, it, it really can work nicely. So we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but I think the, the development standards, along with the facade grant, just are a perfect marriage. And this is, this is, uh, again, kind of a takeoff from your TSP. So, uh, you know, in my transition, those to my successor, I'll lay out how this could be considered to be set up for future. So these are all, these three things here are all wonderful tools to revitalize your downtown. I'm a big fan of the downtown development standards, but this is, this is where the TSP will set the stage for these things. You want anything you add on to that, Liam?
One other great thing about the TGM grants, that Preston did not mention. So we have one TGM grant right now, the TSP. How do we turn that into more grants or more planning? Is that they're totally managed by the state. So we have no administrative burden, we don't enter into any contracts, you don't have to worry about budgeting for them. So they're really low maintenance grants. So you won't see that pass through in the budget, because ODOT does all the work. And that is awesome, right? Because we know that one of the biggest issues with grants is that administrative burden. So that's something that I just really want to highlight about the TGM program. It's DLCD and ODOT working together. They do the administration, they enter into a contract with a consultant. And it makes it really easy for the city to end up with a good finished product, um, without having to invest too much resources in it. So that's just another thing I want to highlight, is that it is a really good chain, because we, we get to have people do the work and not have that administrative burden that can be so challenging with grant costs.
So if we have a TGM right now, is it unlikely that we get another to help do the downtown?
Yeah, we, we need to close out this one, but they, they, they're pretty rapid, um, for small communities. And then we would cascade that into our next applications, whether that's TGM or a different technical assistance pod. We would use that as a cascade, and ideally that's identified in your TSP update as our next steps, yeah?
Very nice precursor with TSP for these other things. It, it really is. And even like downtown development standards, it's the same kind of process. You choose a consultants, but it manages all the finances. And, and part of it is to, to, to make sure cities don't change the scope in any way, or funding or whatever. It just kind of ensures, uh, uh, consistency through the project. And, uh, I think it's great, great, great that they do this, really. Okay, uh, that was more information, uh, than all. This last subject, um, is an opportunity. I don't know when this has ever come up before, but, uh, if you're aware of the UGB process, it's lengthy and, uh, uh, it's a lot of work. You don't do a UGB update willy-nilly. It's a big deal. This Senate bill, it came out last year, allows cities like Sheridan a one-time opportunity to bring in developable land for housing. It's a much nicer way for the state to require or offer housing density without jamming and doing the bro. Changing zoning densities and everything without any input from the cities. So this was a nice thing. And, uh, and what we would like to do is work with a willing property owner, you gotta have a willing property owner, to bring forward to council a proposal to take advantage of bringing in a, a highly developable piece of land. And, and, and also swap out area that's not so great.
So a private landowner would have to do this?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So looking at the map here, uh, we have, uh, various properties that could come in and develop, but the area that would come out is this up here. Not the whole thing, just this. Perhaps Loma. It depends on what you bring in. But this area up there in our UGB currently is, would require exorbitant cost to extend facilities. So it's not practical. And, and by taking that property out, it benefits everyone in the city, because we are avoiding exorbitant costs to extend those services. So that is a citywide benefit, taking that out. Now, the other, on the other hand, the private benefit would be to bring in a, a lot, you know, or two or something. This lot right here, everybody tells, it is plug and play. Ready to go. We got sewer, we got water, uh, this would be a wonderful lot. Uh, I've got another owner expressing interest, and he owns, he owns these two parcels. Really can only build along there. Doesn't offer a whole much on housing. So, uh, 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 so we need to identify a willing property owner that makes sense for housing. And so if, un- unless, uh, unless council, unless council says, thinks otherwise, uh, we will pursue that. And if you've got ideas on property owners that might want to take advantage of it, yes, let us know. Uh, there's not too many properties on our borders that are good for housing. There really isn't, because of the constraints. Either extending for infrastructure or flood, floodplain, uh, that sort of thing. So, uh, so what do you think?
Takes a willing owner to jump on the bandwagon. What's the advantage for the owner?
The advantage is to come into the UGB. There's no obligation to ever add or develop. But there's an expectation that it's probably gonna happen at some point. Your taxes don't change. This can all be explained to property owners that would like to come in. Your taxes don't change until you come into...
Preston, I don't wanna, and, and what Preston is speaking towards is the normal UGB expansion process. Under Senate Bill 1537, there is an obligation to annex and develop. If we pursued the one-time UGB expansion, yes. So in a traditional UGB expansion, Preston's completely correct. They would be in the UGB, they would have the option to have development at these standards. Under 1537, they would have to agree to be annexed and to develop, um, at some point.
Very important.
Yes, but it's a, it's a special distinction. No matter what, if we start this process, if for some reason the Senate bill process doesn't work out, we'll start, we'll look at how do we pursue a traditional process. We don't want to leave people in the lurch, and we've identified at least as staff, that there's, there's at least demand or need or problems with the lots left in our...
When they, when you say there's an expectation to develop at some point, how long do they have until they have to develop?
I would have to double check. It depends on the procedure in which they're brought in, or Senate Bill 1537. There's three different procedures that you're brought in under, depending on how much land, or if you swap, or if you don't swap. And there's different levels of the sort of project you have to do. If you bring in the most land and it's not swapped, you have to develop in a very fixed timeframe, group circuit densities, and actually have a development plan before your, uh, your UGB expansion occurs. Uh, the other two are a little bit closer to a traditional.
And that's the expectation of an owner to do all that, right?
It's, it's the expectation of a, of the landowner ended up.
But just to answer Jim's question, if you have 13 acres, you were farming and it was really great land, it's already being farmed, so it's cleared. And you were gonna sell it for residential, you'd be making a whole lot more money off of that property.
If it was in the city limits?
It was in the city.
Or you, sorry, UGB.
For, for these, for the seller, for the owner, who would be the seller? So depending on what their needs were, they could be looking at their, you know, retirement allowance or like.
Well, that's very important. Yeah, thank you for mentioning. They, they have, whoever comes in, the swap, whatever that the state would approve, you have to annex and develop. Likelihood of this happening just went down. But doesn't mean we can't try and find somebody.
I don't have much time to do it.
Lot many options, I really use them. So.
I have a question. So the, what is the cherry hill up on the north hills? How many acres is that roughly accumulated? You're doing the swap thing. You evidently have a little bit more leniency, I'm just hearing it for that first time. But so if it was a swap, it'd be a little bit more lenient versus if you were swapping, you know, 20 acres for 50 acres. And and you wanted the 50 acres, but you only had 20 inside the urban growth, that would be a little bit more, according to what Liam was saying, you might have to develop sooner. There'd be a timeframe if you were currently, you know, using that property for, you know, well, usually it's farming of some such, whether it's trees or animals or grain.
Seems like you could work it out. So you have certainty over time. But that's something Liam would have to research in Senate Bill 1537 and see what, how that process may.
And my other question would be then, like you were saying, when one person sees it, it usually, you know, takes the leader to bring the sheet. But if, if one person had 10 acres, is it a one-time deal with this urban growth? Or, I mean, you know, get, get the most you can at, at one time? Because for this to happen again might be kind of like what the comment that comes through.
This will, this already is being amended to change. That there are already people in our state legislature who want these, this one-time UGB expansion rules to change. It is one-time. The actual rules for the expansion say that you're not allowed to use those rules twice. And it may not be on the table for a term. It actually was only in the bill, I think it's 2032, that it expires. Is that correct?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, I was off by a year, thank you. You've got Senate Bill 1537 right there.
And there's, and there's a limit of 25, what, is it 25 acres or something?
There's an acreage limit, yep. And if it's, if it's over 15, then you have to use that highest level process unless it's a swap. And in terms of the questions about capacity, we've got a single lot up there that has about 19 acres inside of our UGB. One of the lots we've identified that come in is at about 20. So we have the land to 50/50 it acreage-wise. What you really need to justify is that you're 50/50-ing it density-wise, which we also have the rule to justify. So there, there, there is that capacity up there. There are a few big lots that just those make up over 30 acres combined.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be easier to justify that it's easier to have more density on a flat piece than up on the hill.
Our, our code actually already, it increases the minimum lot size for those users who are in the hillside overlay, right? Their minimum lot size is increased. So we actually have to account for that. And we have to account for that when we do the BLI as well. We're gonna notice that, hey, we got all this land left, but it's supposed to develop at lower densities. Because, yeah, you know, it, it up to lot size? And it does miss up the lot size, the, the terrain means it's expected to develop at even lower densities. And the state allows us to account for that.
It's good to know it doesn't expire in 23, 23-3.
Well, there's already a fix-it bill. The fix-it bill doesn't make us ineligible, but there, there's already discussion about is this a thing that we want to keep? It's a toy we have right now, but it's, and it's one that there are some people in the legislature who want to keep it in our toy box. And there's other people in the legislature who, yeah. So we'll see how long we get to play.
And I'm, the sky is falling. Run, take it, run.
Well, it just may not be a good fit for us. But we can try.
Yeah.
That's all we're asking. Have council support to go out there and try to find something that fits. I'm not, I, it's, I think it, I think it's low success. We'll try.
So Liam, if you had 30 acres in the urban growth, because that's roughly what you said, roughly. And but you could only find somebody who had 10, would they consider that a swap?
We wouldn't take, we would, we would keep as much as we could. So we would base it based off of the expected density, not just the square acreage. So for example, 30 to 10 might be accurate if that 30 is in hillside and all zoned our one. And the 10 that we're gonna bring in is all gonna be zoned our three, right? If that, the densities might actually match. But we will do our darndest to make sure that we don't lose a, a single acre that we don't need to lose.
So what about the guy who gets it taken away from him and he just, he knows that he's in the future of the urban growth boundary? And you take it away from him and he doesn't want it taken from him?
So normally in a swap, you have to have two willing, everybody has to be on the table in a traditional swap. And that is the case. And usually the argument is for folks who are in the hillside is that we will make you spend in order, like, obscene amounts of money to develop. We will spend obscene amounts of money just trying to serve you. So it's very expensive versus the ability to go off of well and septic at some higher lots. You might actually build a bill with lots for sale. And we're seeing this right now with property owners trying to develop in our hillside. These projects are becoming prohibitively expensive and it's getting to the point where they won't be able to turn a profit. They may be able to do that if they could go off a well and septic instead. So that's your pack carrot. The stick with this one is in Senate Bill 1537, you do not have to have the consent of the property owners coming out. If they, you have to notify them and say that you're gonna take them out. And if they go, hey, I don't want to leave, you can go, okay, are you gonna annex in X amount of time into our city limits? If you're not in our city limits? And it has language that is very vague, and maybe Tyler can expand on it. But it does have language saying you can make sure that they agree to develop and come in and join the task base. So we sort of have the carrot of you might not be able to develop under our standards and make profits. Maybe you don't even ever want to develop, maybe you like your big one. Or we have a stick of, hey, we're gonna annex you. And that's gonna change your taxes. And you're gonna agree to it because you don't want to help us with our project. Which I don't like using the stick, I might prefer the carrot. I did a traditional UGB swap, I worked on one in Roseburg. I, I helped close it, I was not the lead on that project. But that was our carrot. Our carrot was, hey, we've got these steep, steep hillsides. We cannot give you water. You cannot pay to get our water. Our water system cannot serve you. But if you could drill well or if you could build a private system that has a much lower standard than our city system, you can, you could get like 20 lots up there. And right now you can get zero. So that's the carrot.
And Liam's talking about some of the things you can negotiate or bring up in that kind of a process. But the bottom line is on for Senate, for Senate Bill 1537, you have to have a willing property owner to come in, but not necessarily to go out. This is where the council makes a decision. Best for the community, not the individual owners. So they don't have to agree to, to the going out of the UGB. That would be a council decision.
So I know you said it might be unlikely, but so under a normal UGB swap, does it take, you know, I'm assuming it takes longer, but then also is there like more planning involved on that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could, it could take, a, a UGB expansion can be a really short process. It can take a community two years if all their plans are in place. If all their plans aren't in place and you're not trying to go after the perfect lot that DLCD really loves, it can take you 30 years. I say that because, again, I was the last planner who, not actually the last, because they had to carry it on after I left. I was the last planner in a long line of planners at the city of Roseburg who worked on a UGB exchange that technically began 10 years before I was employed with that organization. On a, for a parcel of land that was identified in the eighties as a place where the city wanted to go. So we're looking at a timescale of anywhere from two years if all your plans are in place and the stars align and you've got the exception lands. Or if you're in metro and you're everybody's favorite. Or, you know, 30 years if the stars don't align and you don't have all your plans in place. I would say conservatively, like a, a more proper estimate, if, if we were to truly begin this process, it would begin with our BLIs, which we're already working on. It would begin with adopting a modern housing capacity analysis and mending our comprehensive plan. And I would say a much more realistic timeline would be somewhere between seven and 10 years. I'm giving the 30-year example because it's good to know that that can happen, right? And remember, players, we think in like five years is a short period of time for us, right? 20 years is what we plan for. So anything shorter than 20 years is fast. But for a community that needs to grow, that needs housing, that has problems, 20 years might feel like eons, right? For me, like I'm a liar, right? That's how we plan.
And also to add that the changing landscape of this legislation, every session, more land is things. It could be more housing.
Already more housing, yeah.
It could be, you know, and just changing this one over and over. So it, it's a, it's a really, it is a changing landscape in these regulatory issues as, as the state tries to figure out more ways to allow housing. And, and so, so protecting our resource lands has unfortunately not, not been as preserved as we would have liked since the original, the white panels got into. Now back into the history a little bit. But that's why this, as it sits right now, is a wonderful opportunity to expedite it. Process that just might work out for the community and a willing owner.
We also have the opportunity to apply for a grant to fund this work directly from the state of Oregon. It's something that I want to point out. The Cog actually has the capacity to do grant writing for this grant without, without billing the city. So that's another, another plus. We would need the council to do a resolution in support of that grant and the project at some point. But not until we've actually written the grant. We don't need that as an application item, is my understanding.
Is that for Senate Bill or unrelated to Senate?
That's for Senate Bill 1537.
Oh, right.
So there is an opportunity on the table to, just, just try and poke our necks out and see if the state's interested in funding the work, which might benefit the city as well.
All right, Liz.
Shouldn't we identify someone that wants to swap land first before we pursue that though? Wouldn't that be the way to go?
Well, we, we have contacted, we're starting to contact some property owners and begin these conversations. Senate Bill 1537 has a lot of processes. We, we'd like to pursue the swap, that's, that's process number one, because the state government likes swaps. They prefer swaps to grants for small communities, right? They, they tend to support that more. There are options that are not swaps. We, through the planning process, we would determine what is the most appropriate procedure. We think it's gonna be a swap. We want to find the property owners, we want to talk to them. Unless I get direction from council, even if it's just general direction, we can't really pursue this. And that's kind of why we're talking about this today is without some kind of head nod, you don't want a big planning bill from Liam and that planning bill was, oh, I just called a bunch of property owners and had conversations about a thing that you guys didn't know we were talking about. Because I, if I were you and I got that bill, I wouldn't write that bill. So I want to make sure that before we start this work, we're identifying ways to pay for it, if possible. I'd rather you not pay for it than the state did for it. That would be the best possible world. And then if the state doesn't want to pay for this work, we know that it's something the community's working towards. And it's not a surprise that this project is starting.
The key is a willing property owner that has developable land for housing. Not just a few units, but meaningful.
Who, who determines if it's developable?
Well, that's.
It's flat.
It's pretty. It's gonna be self-evident.
This wasn't sure if like somebody had a sign off.
There's, there are certain standards for adding a lot into your UGB, right? There's an analysis that we perform anytime a community wants to do a UGB expansion. You do an alternatives analysis. Technically, you look at every single property you could possibly add to your UGB. And then there are a hierarchy of things that make a property good or bad, right? Developable or not. Some things that you can count are, is it on a hillside? Is it in, does it have a lot of wetlands? Is it in the floodplain? If you look at those three things, you look at all the properties around us, you look at all the ones that are zoned for housing, you would eliminate almost the entirety of our reported properties, right? So just without having to do that extensive analysis, I can kind of tell you, as a council, that analysis is gonna tell us to go southwest, right? That's what it's gonna point to us. And so that's generally where we want to look, to have conversations with property owners. In the southwest, I know Preston already called out, there's one property that is comp plan designated by the county as residential. Almost all of those properties are zoned for agricultural or farming. But one is comp plan designated as residential. That makes it exception lands. And I talked about that priority list. Number one is are you zoned or comp planned designated for residential? That's the number one priority. So we've got one lot that meets that number one priority. If that landowner is willing to work with us, we do not need to do an expensive analysis on where to go. We know where to go, right? If that landowner is not willing to work with us, if it's a different landowner, we're gonna have to do a long alternatives analysis. And the state may look at that and go, why don't you go there? That's the truth.
So move forward, right? Council says, let's see if we've got a willing property owner, right?
Okay, all right.
We will do that.
Well, looks like everything, Jim?
I noticed the conster, mayor comments weren't added to his agenda, but I have some.
I guess I had lots you wanna, I guess, for the regular meeting, but either way, you can go.
Soon we'll get these kind of things out there. We had a big contest for the city logo and we approved one, paid $500. When were we gonna use it?
Yeah, I planned to bring it back. Hopefully in a work session, we can talk about what council wants. Because from what I remember, it sounded like there was some suggestions on, on changes or tweaks to it before we wanted to adopt. And that's just hasn't been something that's scheduled. Maybe the August or maybe we can even talk about it at the regular.
It's always been like forgotten because the reason it came up to me is Preston, you were writing a letter to somebody and you asked me, is the right logo? And I said, well, it was until we approved a new one. But I don't know where the new one is.
Yeah, yeah, we technically just awarded the contest winner. But I mean, the, the idea was to, you know, use that winner submission as a logo. But there was a couple of suggestions before we used it and, yeah, I haven't been able to put it on the agenda. Yeah, but I think now that Preston's been here for a couple of meetings, I think we can figure out where we can talk about.
My, my understanding is there, there hasn't been a council decision yet on adopting of the logo.
Right.
But you've talked about it. You made the award, but not.
We, we didn't, we didn't make like officially change it. And I think part of that was that there was some tweaks I think council wanted to do first. And, and the, the artist was totally willing to make any of those tweaks too, so that's nice.
Except my wife, the chairman of the Parks and Recreation, would just ask me, hey, what's the status on the dog parks? When's that gonna be ready to go? She couldn't tell me. Because she doesn't know. I don't think you can tell me either, can you, Preston?
Just what I informed at the Parks and Rec meeting that night that we met in June. And that is the dog park fencing is all in the budget. And we're gonna be planning on doing that here early this, this year. So I don't have a date yet. Because a lot of things, you know, we'd like to start up and do. But I made a commitment to the, pardon me, the Park and Recreation, that that dog park. I made a commitment to the, pardon me, the Park and Rec Commission that that dog park and Jefferson Park is a high priority, and we're gonna get it done. It's gonna get done this summer, absolutely. I can't, I, I mean, that's pretty dang good, and that's, but it's not giving me a date.
Well, still, it's, to know that it hasn't fallen off, I mean.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna take one step ahead of you. I know the fencing is already here.
Yeah.
Forget to budget it, we already have the fencing here, it's physical control. And, uh, yeah, when I, the first question I asked her is how long has it, it's been discussed? It's been over three years.
Yeah.
It's like, well, let's, it's time to, we got the trees planted, we got water down there. It seems like the process should speed up now, it's going the same speed it was three years ago, one little bump at a time.
Jim, just think of it in Liam's timeline.
Anything under five years is instantaneous.
I wasn't, I'm a thirty-year dog park builder.
It was my understanding that they need to hire some, not volunteers, that's part of the.
Sound like this. Well, summer, yeah, so we forgot, we got some.
It's still on, on the plate, I'm just gonna check out. Um, this is a, I heard a complaint from somebody, I, this evening on the way in, but today earlier, when I drove by the city wall line. So the sign in front of the city wall is, um, the hometown days on the twentieth and twenty-first. Probably should be taken in or changed or whatever.
You talking about our bulletin board here?
No, on the, the sign right on the street, you know, that we have, it says, whatever you're gonna do, uh, with the lake for hometown days, which we're kinda already first next year. Uh, one of the, I think, kinda all runs together, I think, uh, first things first, ODOT, uh, since the legislature didn't do anything, ODOT, they're cutting five hundred people right now. So if we think we're gonna get any help in ODOT soon on anything, I seriously doubt it. I don't know how big ODOT is, but five hundred people has to make a difference. I would think that, so, the, uh, cuts for the handicap, uh, this is gonna be done in two years. I think that's gonna be a little bit longer out there. That can't be one of their high priorities.
It, well, it was settlement under legislation, it's a big high priority.
They still have to do it probably, but maybe not, it's.
And then we were mentioning tonight FEMA, helping us out with some things. Well, the federal government is trying to turn all the, uh, things that FEMA does over to the states, and the states, including Oregon, are saying, well, we don't have the money for that. And the other government said, well, you know, you're more, you're, you're more local, you would understand that. So I don't think we should be dying on any money from FEMA in the near future.
Well, maybe we should just make up our own rules about floodplains in small communities, screw that. I'm, I'm gonna pull that one. And maybe for the reader board, since you got me going, maybe they can put it on when the citywide cleanup, I think you said it was.
The citywide, or the rummage sales coming next, right? Is it, oh, it's a citywide rummage sale.
And I thought you had a tough one either, though.
July twenty-first.
Yeah, cause it takes people while to get stuff collected, get junk out of there. It's gonna take me a while to get junk out of there, getting rid of stuff.
Uh, Jim, you more?
I got one last thing, and I think it's kind of a big thing. We all saw on the news what happened down in Texas the last couple days, the traumatic flooding. Their system of notification was not, almost non-existent. And we had already been talking about, so, that it, it wasn't even much of a big thing, but our, our water line, when you never boil water, people didn't get cold. How soon or close are we to getting some sort of emergency contact system going?
Well, I can give an update at the next meeting, the council meeting.
Cause I realize it's a challenge, and there's lots of different things, and again, the outflow of money. But, uh, I think, and the, and just with that in mind, who the hell knows what's gonna happen anytime.
Well, August, fire season.
Yeah, fire season. We have, we're kinda almost up to, up to stuff on fire, but we don't think about floods, earthquakes. Could happen anytime, and, uh, you know, it, there is an urgency to that, especially seeing the devastation down there, it's just incredible. I don't think our river's ever gonna rise, uh, twenty-five feet in forty-five minutes, but, uh, we can see some flooding coming here.
That river went up twenty-six feet in.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes, incredible.
Over, over a hundred feet going up, though. Lost your line, I'm still looking. That's only, I'm sorry.
On a positive note.
There you go.
Um, is the rummage sale July twenty-first and twenty-second?
I was just gonna ask you, does anybody know the rummage sale?
I think it's the twenty, it's in my, it's on my phone.
I think it's the twenty-first and twenty-second. I'm emailing right now.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll verify it, cause I.
El.
Speaking of the kettle meat. You didn't catch that one.
Preston said he was gonna fix it.
Oh, it's the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Of July, yes.
No, that was the citywide rush though.
Yeah, that is.
That's what I was talking about first.
Twenty-five.
Oh, I meant to say the citywide twenty-seventh.
That'd even be the front of the sign, it's still a hometown beach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And another thing is, are they gonna use the Barbara Roberts Center to do that dump again on the August ninth?
So do I clean up?
I don't know the site. Is that one of those last?
That, that's when there was a building there though, so now it's, uh, in, uh, well, I really don't know, uh, exactly what's going on. But, um, that would, you, I would check with, with the school list or I can see.
They had a bathroom, I think, that we, we could use if we're volunteering, except the worst, they might need an outhouse at the worst. But I would, I would think they would still use it, cause whenever you use the building, you just could do everything outside. But it'd be nice to inform people so they can start getting their stuff together, so they can get ready, cause it takes a while to.
Do we have a date on that?
Yes, the ninth.
Oh, August ninth.
August ninth, Saturday, that's the cleanup day.
Okay.
Alright.
Good, anything else? Okay, um, alright, we can, um, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna wait here.
Okay, Jim.
Second.
Okay, first and second, uh, okay, all in favor? Uh, we're adjourned, it's, uh, eight fifty-seven.
So it's sweet here.
We, we two hours.